I don't see audio.
You gotta slide down, slide the bar, no, 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 the bar on the right. There you go.
Okay.
So it has been long enough. Oh, shoot, Howard, I got a call from him. I forgot one, Howard. Sorry, give me one minute. I was just gonna say who's running the meeting and it's Howard. He's waiting for you.
Are you the technological whiz, Brian?
I was asked to, since I was here for six, five of my meetings, to stick around.
He's my lovely assistant.
Hi, Howard. I'm gonna put you on speakerphone, okay? All right. Go ahead and talk, just say hello and we'll see if we can hear you.
Hello, this is Howard.
Hello, Howard.
Hi, Howard.
Hi.
Everybody.
So we are ready to start the meeting. We are streaming live on YouTube. And if you wanna go ahead and open the meeting, I will go over the COVID rules as we, as we get to them, okay?
Okay, I'll follow in order. Do we have a form?
I will do roll call to double check. Commissioner Haletz?
Yes, here.
Commissioner Butch?
Here.
Commissioner Woodward?
Here.
Commissioner Strong?
Here.
Commissioner Granger?
Here.
Commissioner Ross?
Here.
And Commissioner Nelson? Not present. I would like to introduce our newest member, Pete Ross. He's been helping the city with, on a couple of different roles. He's one of our election workers. So he's kinda familiar with us. Most of you have probably met him either through the elections or just kinda being around City Hall at different times. So he, I mean, he does have some experience. We talked about him last time we met, about possibly being a member. So we're glad to have him on board. And our other new member, Commissioner Nelson, is not present tonight, but we will hopefully be able to introduce him at the next meeting.
Okay, good. Welcome to the board, Pete.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to approval and our corrections of the September 13th, 2019 regular meeting minutes and the January 21st, 2020 special meeting minutes.
Well, just to prove I actually read these somewhere, Eric. No, no, that was in the college minutes, excuse me. Disregard that.
I couldn't quite hear what was.
It was, it wasn't important.
Tom thought there was an error, but it was in a different set of minutes, so we're, we're okay.
Okay.
If you talk into your mics really close, Howard will be able to hear you better too, that'll help amplify.
Okay, I think we can cover both of those meetings for approval with one motion. Someone wants to do that.
I move we approve both sets of minutes.
Support then.
Okay, wait, we have a motion as support. Is there any further discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, are there any additions to the agenda?
I would like to add, for the next regular meeting, a conditional use for 1212 Minneapolis. It's for a playground for Lutheran Church. It, it doesn't affect today's agenda, but it was just forgotten on the upcoming agenda.
Okay. Okay, are there any other additions? Okay, if not, we'll move on. Don't have any public hearing. No unfinished business. So we move right into new business. First of all, we have the 2020 regular meeting schedule.
And it's ironic that we're approving the 2020 schedule in September, but it is the first time we've met since the schedule was put out. We did meet in January, but the schedule wasn't ready yet. And so the, the schedule that you have before you is what we're looking to discuss. And I believe there is one date in there that falls on Election Day. And I would like to change that, potentially to the following week. That's typically what we do. Pete and I will be busy that day.
Yeah. Now, is that 2019? Cause we haven't met at, at that year?
I think that, that's just a typo, so those should be changed. But I know it hits on November 3rd. It's, is the Tuesday.
So the 19s go to 20s?
Yep.
It should all be 2020, right?
Yep, and then we'll change the November 3rd to November 10th, if that works. And that's only if we have business. You know, I can't anticipate that, but those would be the designated posted dates.
Right.
So if we're okay with those dates, I would need a motion on that and a support and get that voted on.
I move to approve again, meeting schedule.
Eldger, motion to approve it.
Okay. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, we're good.
Who supported that?
I got, I put Dave down.
Dave? Okay, we have a motion as support. Is there any further discussion? If not, all in favor, just think about what I'm saying, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, the next item on the agenda is the site plan review, Article 2 of the Northern Storage Unit. Renee, you wanna filter the information on that, please?
Yes, so we have property, the city owns property right next to the Family Dollar. It's the vacant lot, right next to Family Dollar. And Eric Hansen approached the city about purchasing that property. It was quite a while back. He was just in the process of securing the property when COVID hit and Eric has had some pretty severe health conditions and he went underground for a while. So this proposal has been kicked around the city for a while. But he is ready to start working on it and would like to be in work yet this fall. And it's funny because the same day that he came in to start work on it, or to get it moving again, we had another proposal to purchase that same lot. And it's, it's funny to me because it's been vacant for so long that nobody's been interested in it, all of a sudden everybody wants it. But it is for storage units. And I do have Eric's number. We can call him if we have any issues. I didn't anticipate that there would be, but we can definitely call him if, if we need to. This falls in the B2 district. We do have a precedence of other storage units in the B2 districts. Several other locations actually are located in, in that same commercial district. The number of buildings that he's proposing building on that site, which seems so small when you look at it, but he's got it planned out to have five buildings located on that site. Three smaller buildings up towards the highway and then longer buildings in the, in the back part of the property. This has been reviewed by staff and all of the zoning components. And everything was in compliance. We did make some recommendations, if you'll note. The DPW department wanted to make sure, they were definitely concerned about water flow in that area and wanted to make sure that some of the items were addressed to direct that. And some of the things that they came up with were to ensure that there's a small ditch dug along 13th and 3rd. And actually, the city is doing that and then we will build the owner for it. And then each drive approach be paved with curb and gutter and have a 15-inch culvert installed. And if any additional development was done, then a separate conditional review and approval would be done. I don't know that it has to be a conditional review. It would depend on the development, but we put that in there just, just in the event of something else. Once these are built, they don't know that there's much room to do anything more. But there was some talk about that there might be some different type of development utilized there. And that may be the case, but any change in use would trigger an automatic review anyway. So, but that was just added there. And then to be consistent with the way that the city sells property, Mr. Hansen's very aware that he does have to develop within 18 months of securing the property. And he's able to work within those guidelines.
Have he and the commission come to an understanding on, on that? Or has that not been discussed at the price?
Oh, the price, the price was already solidified.
Okay.
If you, I, I believe he purchased it for $26,000. Does it ring a bell, Eric?
Is that purchase completed or is it still in process?
The purchase is, the purchase is not fully complete. He, they negotiated a price. What's not complete is title work and that kind of thing has not been transferred over yet. It's in, it's in process. So there's a, there's a development agreement that was created between the city and him. And that has been approved. It's just a matter of carrying out that agreement at this point. So it's title work and transferring of the deed. Good stuff that has to be done.
Now, this ditch that's being created, where is that flow going to go?
That's a good question. The ditch between 13th and 30th, I believe it's directed towards the storm drain. That's where Barry wanted it directed towards. So on the site plan, you can see he wrote storm drain there.
But there's also a note in there that that has to be approved in order to use that drain by the state?
There's a note in, oh, on the, on the typing that's there?
Yeah, it's on the site plan, I think. Says if the storm drain is used, you need to contact the MDOT and the county for permission.
Yep, that, those notes are from the, the engineer. And that would have to be done by, that would have to be completed by the owner to make sure that they can get that. And I believe they did touch base. I, I think they had to get a permit to do it. But those, those notes, when I, I remember, and this was from initially, you know, way back, a year ago when we were talking, almost a year ago when we were talking about this. And those notes, we were comfortable that were, that they could be done.
I'm assuming we're incorporating those notes then along with our approval to the extent they're still applicable.
Yep, yep, we could do that. And the staff findings, if you just wanted to note that those could be included. I forgot that those are there, so good catch, Eldger.
Well, if there's no more discussion or any input from public, I would move that we approve this use as required and that we incorporate, to the extent applicable, the notes from the engineer and also any staff recommendations.
Renee, I have our type hearing together. Was that a motion?
Yes, that was a motion. I'll try again, Howard. That we approve the use as proposed and the, the map and include also all of the conditions of the engineer, engineers that are on the plat survey and all of the recommendations of the staff.
Okay, and that's not a talking, right?
Yes.
It is, yes.
Okay, we have a motion by Tom. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
That was Pete.
Okay, the second by Pete. Is there any further discussion?
Just a clarification question here. When you're incorporating the notes of the staff, are we talking about these specific notes that are set out in the memo? Or the estimated time for build, the ditch, the drive approaches? And any additional development would require another review?
Is that further discussion? I can't hear.
No, I'm sorry, it's, that is Eldger asking for clarification on what staff recommendations we're actually referring to. And it would be my understanding from Tom's motion, and Tom, correct me if I'm wrong, that you're talking about the, under the bullets, under the summary recommendation of the staff report?
That's correct. If that's what you were referring to, I was trying to incorporate that. And that seemed to me to be what was applicable.
Does that clarify your question, Eldger?
Yes, that's fine, so we know for sure what it is.
Okay.
Okay.
Is there any further discussion?
Question. Even though this is under the zoning that's approved already, and because there's houses and everything around it, does it have to have a special meeting notifying those people?
No, so in the B2 district, we do have storage units. There are some, there are some setback requirements for, because it borders residential. So there's an additional 30-foot setback for bordering the residential lots. And it does meet that. Actually, didn't at first, but he had to move those storage units over a bit. So, storage units are unique in the sense that they're, they're not in our code, but the precedence has been that this is how we treat them. So until we do something different, I'm just not quite sure what to do with them. And they are in our B2 district and we've treated them as, as uses, principal uses in our district. Like I said, they do have to meet that 30-foot setback that's in addition to something that's kind of over and above what's normal. But I know everybody, I don't wanna say we hate, we hate storage units, but they're hard to, I, we just keep wondering how many more do we need. But every storage unit in the city is, everybody that I say that's looking for one, they're all full. So that's why they keep popping up. There's a need for them here. And our precedence has been that they can, they can go in these areas. It wasn't our first choice, but it is certainly something that, it met all the, the requirements.
Okay, is there any further discussion? If not, all in favor, just think aside if I say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, next is the information sharing by city manager. First of all?
Okay, Ninth Street. All the utilities are in. They started back in April. And they started with the sewer on Fourth Street. We've got them designated as critical construction workers because we were having problems with the sewer being able to handle the, the stormwater that was coming off. That, and combined with the high lake levels, was really putting a strain on our sewer. So they put the big main collector down Fourth Street and also went down Sixth Street to Superior and, and Superior was, Avenue to Sewer was replaced. And they also put a new forest main all the way from Superior up past Holiday and REA up to Third Street. That's the brick building you see across the highway right next to the railroad tracks. That's our underpass lift station and that pumps all the sewage from the North Fluff and Rapid River under the highway. And so that now has two forest mains and its capacity is up quite a bit. And the utilities we're in, they, they've been working on and off on the curb and gutters. They should be completely done with the curb and gutters in the next couple days. And Paint and Dawn will be in on Thursday to do some more paving. We're hoping they're going to have the intersection blocked again underneath their, the red light. So paving will be on Ninth and a couple of the other side streets need another layer. And I would guess they would come back one or two more times to put the top coats on. And so you can see the light at the end of the tunnel. Fourth Street, which is our project that we got state MDOT funds for about eight, it covered 80% of the asphalt, which comes out to be about 60% of the project. And they had their miller in and it was all milled on Monday. And of course, the sewer was already put in. And so they're finishing with the curb and gutters on the side. And then they'll be paving that in the near future. So that's what's going on and.
Are they essentially on schedule?
They're, they're actually way ahead of schedule. But I don't say that. We got them in early.
I'm sorry I asked, disregard.
November 14th is their, is their day before deer season and.
That does.
And I think they'll be out of here by, before October. So everything has gone good, gone well. Did you want me to do a staffing update?
Yeah, I had a couple of the commissioners asking about changes. We had, we haven't met since Nicole Sanderson retired. I was just hoping you could give a quick update on that. I know we're not too far along in filling position, Jeff, but.
Well, Nicole's job has been, is being advertised right now. We're looking for a new recreation director. We had some job switching going on. We, we, one of the DPW guys who was almost certified to be alignment, transferred to electric because we're going to have a couple retirements in the next few years. So we wanna have somebody who can step right in. And of course, somebody from Public Works, that person was from Public Works. He jumped over and then the, the maintenance and janitor guy that was working with the recreation, he jumped over to DPW. So in the meantime, we had, one of the DPW employees was hurt quite badly. He broke his, actually broke his arm socket, didn't he? And so Barry had budgeted the last few years to hire another employee because they're down, when two guys take vacation, they don't have enough guys to have a crew. So we are hiring another DPW person. And so right now, we have opening for the Parks and Rec Director, the maintenance and janitor position, who ends up being the main base, you see, at the sports park in the wintertime with the ballparks. And sanitary operator. Gets to drive the truck and grab the garbage cans and foot them in, so.
So lots of openings. Howard, I'm just gonna jump into my update. We have community development. We've had some pretty steady development stuff going on. We've had three new homes go up in Gladstone, nice, nice homes. And Judy can probably attest that homes are moving. You know, we're seeing a lot of, a lot of homes selling quickly in Gladstone and, and a lot of people looking for land more so than any other year since, since I've worked here. So that's good. I came, as, as Howard can attest, right at the start of the downfall and Howard often blamed me for it. But, so we're starting to see an uptake in, you know, people looking again. And even as far as commercial buildings getting filled, we're seeing a lot of reuse of buildings and a lot of people looking to do some new and different things. Ron's building is currently for sale and he's had quite a bit of interest in, in his little cute house on Delta. So that's promising for us. I'm gonna let Ron do the, the DEA update because he, he is our DEA coordinator and since he's here, I'm gonna let him do that.
Certainly, for those of you who don't know me, I'm Ron Miaso. I'm the DEA coordinator for the city of Gladstone. One of the things that we've been working on for literally a year has been a DEA amendment to our plan. The reason we're doing that is twofold. Number one, we have the Ninth Street project, which is a 15-year bond and we would have been several years short of the life of the DEA. So first thing we wanna do is extend the life of the DEA. We are going out 20 years, so we would be extending it till March 31st of 2041. The second thing that we took this opportunity to do was update the project list. If we do not have a project listed in the DEA plan, we cannot work on it. So basically, what we did is we queried the city staffs and of course, the DEA board. And then we had a Development Area Citizens Council, which is one of the requirements. And we also got feedback from them. So those are the two things that, that we are moving ahead with. Just before this meeting, the Development Area Council, Advisory Council met and recommended that we take it forward to the last two steps, which is to take it to two consecutive city commission meetings. And if, after those two meetings, it's approved, we then publish it and the life of the DEA has been extended. So that's one of the main things that we've been working on. Another major project, you probably are familiar with, the North Shore project. We went out for an RFQ, request for qualifications. Unfortunately, we sent that out in March just as COVID-19 hit and there wasn't an awful lot of interest. We went back out and we're working with a consultant from Place and Main Advisors. And we're gonna be meeting, I think, within the next week to, to develop our next strategy. Just as an aside, it seems to me with everything going on, people knowing that they can work from home, maybe the desire to get out of bigger cities, I would think that a project like the North Shore would really fit a lot of the requirements. So we're, we're hopeful that we can move that forward. Couple of smaller things. Our farmer's market is going great. We this year hired a new farmer's market manager, Samantha Grisbowski. Samantha's had a background in farming and other farmer's markets and has been a great addition to the market this year. And finally, just as I move around, Renee and I talk to people, there has been a lot of interest in different businesses moving into the DEA district. Just up and down Delta Avenue, there are a number of businesses that are looking to come in. So those are some of the highlights of things that are going on in the DEA.
Question on the North Shore development request for qualification. When exactly now is that going to result in or accomplish?
What we are looking for is a developer to develop the approximate 37 acres. This started literally, I think, three years ago when we had, we called in Michigan State and they did the vision that we worked with Place and Main to develop specific demographic, marketing, dollar-type things. And then Place and Main helped us put the request for qualifications. He then distributed the RFQ to a significant number of different development organizations, like within. like within Michigan, MEDC is involved with getting things out to various developers. So that is how we were proceeding with the RFQ.
To what do we attribute, Ron, this interest in, you know, economic development in the downtown area? Obviously, the DEA helps, but also the housing, all of that type of thing, particularly in this economic time. What's your take on that?
Well, you know, as I go back like three or four years, I mean, it, to me, it seems as though we've taken a lot of steps to improve the kind of visibility, the showcase of downtown. And as people started to move in, you know, we had the, of course, the dewdrop. Then we had the Delta Deli, so we have a lot, and it just take, that starts the spark. So suddenly, you see different businesses starting to move in and it just draws interest. Even as people go to the farmer's market, they now can go across the street to the Dairy Flow. They start walking around. They start looking at different places in the area. And then one of the things that is really going to help us, I'm convinced, is Ninth Street. That project, when it's complete, as people start driving down Ninth Street, I think that is going to really be a very strong attraction to want to bring even added businesses in.
We think it's the winning personalities at the city.
I have no doubt.
All right, Howard, I think we're on commissioner comments.
Okay, good. I had a little trouble hearing. I could hear Ron pretty good, but. Okay, is there any commissioner comments?
I have a question. I see that the, one of the minutes we approved, in there was an approval by the planning commission to amend the planning commission ordinance to allow for two non-resident commissioners. Where is that now?
So Elder asked, Howard, where are we at on the allowing for two planning commissioners to be non-electors? That was in our minutes that we approved. That did go all the way through the process. It did get through the city commission and was posted. So we are legal to do that. So yep, that was taken care of. I did have to ask, it's funny because I had the same question and Kim has been off for a month with Bama Medical. And I had to call her and ask her, did we do this? Because I don't remember doing it and neither one of us remembered. We had to both look it up, but it is done. So we are, that, you know, we'll have to change our bylaws to, to reflect that. So at the next meeting, I do have on, on the agenda that we should look at our bylaws. So that would be something that we should correct in the bylaws. I love that Elder catches all those good things.
Mm-hmm.
Right, not at all. Okay, any other commissioner comments? I would just like to say that I appreciate you allowing me to do this telecon conferencing. I feel much safer this way than being that person. But hopefully, things will change and maybe the next meeting I can, I can be there.
Well, and we appreciate you, we appreciate you doing it for a moment. I know it's not easy and the city continues to look for better technology to make this a little easier for us because it isn't the easiest. We're YouTube-ing, video conferencing, teleconferencing, and we've got microphone equipment too. So it's a little, it's a lot to, you know, try to do just to continue to host meetings. But we appreciate you trying and we'll try and make it easier in the future.
Well, thank you. Okay, is there anything else then? Our next regular meeting is October 6th. At 5:00 PM. Will be reelection, the reelection of officers, we do the bylaws, and then those additional use issues.
Correct.
Okay, if there's nothing else, we're adjourned.
Thank you, thank you, Howard.
You can turn your microphones off and then stop screening.